Good evening, it is Monday, April 1st at 7:00 PM. I'll call our meeting after roll call. Joel?
Here.
You have here.
Here.
Ethan?
Here.
Carly?
Here.
Adam?
Here.
I am here. Dr. Slerno? Has our meeting been properly noticed?
Yes.
Please join me in the presence of the President of the District. The United States of America and to reiterate for all the stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Does someone like to read our mission statement?
Hi, Ken. The Mount Hore of various school districts in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Thank you, Joel. Number two, approval of our agenda. You would love to make your motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Jim, seconded by Carly, to approve our agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you want to oppose?
We gotta go.
Here's the approval of our March 18th, 2024 Board Regular and Executive Session Meeting Minutes. And then you'd like to make a motion to approve?
I want to approve that.
Second. Motion by Adam, seconded by Carly, to approve our March 18th, 2024 Board Regular and Executive Session Meeting Minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Number three, addressing the board. Building good news in students' spotlight.
Alright. You have a bubbly group.
Thanks for looking at IC, talk about some great people here. Cam, Cameron, do you want to stand up next to me so they know? Alright. We'll have you come down in just a minute, you need, okay? Alright, so this is Cameron Rouse, and she's a fifth grader who is in Ms. Young, Ms. Keenan, and Ms. Whitick's class, also in Jamie's class. And what's pretty cool to know about Cameron is she and her family are Trail Blazers. She's very humble, so you might not know it by looking at her, but they have advocated and helped us change our system, or change our classrooms and how we have them set up, so that Cameron and some of her classmates can all be in class together with other fifth graders. So there's many things about Cameron that make her a great person, and one of those things is that she has Down syndrome. And so she was in 4K, she and her parents advocated to be in the general education classroom full-time with her classmates. And with their encouragement and some other families in the community, we started to change how our classrooms were set up to better support students like Cameron and students who have disabilities. And so, starting in kindergarten, she has been in a co-talk classroom with at least two teachers to help her grow and meet her goals. And as a fifth grader now, Cameron has developed great friendships and peer connections, and she is a full member of the classroom community, just like all her other fifth grade classmates. So, not only did Cameron make her change school, not only did Cameron change school for herself and her friends in fifth grade, she changed the intermediate student, or intermediate center for other students with disabilities who learn better and grow more when they learn in the classroom and have a team of teachers working together. Cameron makes our school a better place.
Lovely. Jim, clap.
And while we're on the note of co-teaching, also wanting, that's kind of my theme for Good News to Highlight staff as well, we've been working on shifting our model for about the past seven years to have our staff collaborate together in the general education classroom instead of the resource room. It started with reading intervention with our reading specialists, and then every year we've been making progress ever since. And so, as I counted it out, over 39 different teachers have been involved in our co-talk, co-teaching classes. Here we've got Haley Young, Kristen Keenan, Casey Whitick, Caitlin Gaxman has done some co-teaching with through speech, we've got Free Fox, and Tara Bomber, and so many more who have all been a part of it. And they've all shown a tremendous commitment to collaboration and adjusting their lessons to help students stay in the classroom rather than having to leave. And we are all just so thankful for all the teachers and staff and all the families who have pushed us to grow our inclusion model. And it's been, we've learned a lot, but it's been so worthwhile and works much on our school because of those changes we've made.
That's lovely. That's lovely. We would love to take some pictures tonight, would that be okay?
Yeah, sure.
Can we get a picture? Thank you. And just as a small way of demonstrating our appreciation for you. Would you, if you had a good spot, would you like to put that in your home?
Yes.
Yes, where would it go?
In my room.
In your room, what a perfect spot. So we would love to take a picture with you and your family, would that be okay? You know, I've got a perfect idea. You're gonna be in middle school next year, is that right? We should take a picture in front of the middle school sign. What do you think, just right here in the foyer? And then, do you think we could all take a picture together, all of us as a team? I would love that, I would love that. What do you say we go out this way here, just watch yourself as you walk. Oh, I see where the sky is.
Cameron, your best friend, Jane? All of them say aye. And no one said thanks, so that was it. Far more quiet. They could chime in on other votes. No, we flew out of that house.
I got nervous because the flight, we started boarding like, but then I got high, and it's early. But yeah, like we were on the last flight. I'm surprised because that last flight, 10:00 PM departure from Chicago, usually when you have like the Chicago, it's like a potato plane. Giant plane, and packed to the gills, and it was like probably 60% college kids.
What's that? Where were you at?
I went, I was in New York and DC, but coming back through Chicago for my last, last flight. Did, I mean, if you see the, I'm playing with the Madison Airport posted today as April Fool's Joke, that they are going to now have service between Madison and Milwaukee, it was like a total flight. It was like this whole big thing, and it was pretty dark, but it was like, April Fool's Day or whatever. My bank sent an email that they're getting rid of fees, and I was like, probably April 1st isn't the right date.
You're also a part of the email, you're heading in? I got that email today too.
I'm assuming it's real because it's a bank. And they came through like that, you had like a notification in your thing. Yeah, so I was like, it didn't seem like it was fake. I didn't even think what it was fake. I didn't either, but I tagged him in something else, he goes, you know what day it is, right? And I was like, oh, yeah, I forgot. Epic does a good book first website, if you go to epic.com. Nice. Well, this weather was an April Fool's joke. Kids are supposed to start soccer, so. I'm assuming that, I mean, they have indoor practice. This is snow, it's supposed to be. Last time it melted before the boys had even gone shovel it. They had to shovel like a small patch that's kind of in the shade, and I was like.
Just a little bit, I haven't heard that, so.
Yeah. Often I'm always, like, rain or snow, three times. Yeah, close, like the last meeting was outside on Sunday, I was like, let's just try to sell the rest of the goodies before that. Thursday, I had 4:30, it's like, it's pretty nice. If we have to get through terrible weather week, but it's 80 on Saturday, I'll do it. I will do it. That would be pretty hot.
I don't believe that for a second.
Alright, have a good night. Thanks. I think they should get to stay and vote on some more stuff.
Alright, three B, school news. Ethan, you have anything you'd like to share?
Yeah, thanks for us. So our first thing is that this Thursday, we're having pre-ACT testing at the high school for our freshmen and sophomores, so the rest is up to me. Also, next week is our Viking Band Show on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights at 7:00 PM. The theme this year is Kung-Fu Banda. So if it's still available on the high school website, there are $10 each, I checked, I saw Thursday has the most slots, everything else is kind of already sold out. So if you're still looking to buy some Thursday, that would be your best bet there. I also have, our high school FPS team is going to the State Ball on April 18th, that 20th, the senior team is qualified for the main event. And there are some younger participants also coming along for some extra experience for next year. And then lastly, I had that tomorrow is our election day, so reminder to get out and vote.
We're guessing today was also the start of four corners, is that right? Much harder to think about that, so yes. Thank you for recognizing that tomorrow is election day, and encourage everyone to let their voices be heard. You will see a post on social media here today that helps people understand where and go to vote, and in times that that happens. Thank you, Audrey, for posting that. This also happens to be, and this is no April Fool's joke, this also happens to be School Library Month. In fact, our librarians were just here today sharing their new library and technology plan. Very impressive work, they've established some pretty high goals for themselves, and we look forward to watching their continued good work. And then lastly, I wanted to invite everybody who's in listening to this today, that Wednesday night, we're gonna have a very special evening for potential business partners around our advertising, donations, and other kinds of sponsorship opportunities that will take place at 6:00 PM in our schools, high schools, cafeterias, all are welcome to join us at 6:00 PM, just to learn more about the good work that's being done here in the district.
Board members, does anyone else have anything to add?
I would just add that we, last week on Wednesday, Jessica Madam and I, along with Dr. Slerno, had the opportunity to go to visit the governor's office for the bill signing for the school safety bill. So it was an awesome treat to get invited to that, and gave us a good opportunity to see a little bit of our legislative process in action. We got to meet a couple of the legislators and have to chat a little with Todd Novak, who's the sponsor, one of the main sponsors of the bill, and is the current Assembly Representative for the district we've been drawn into. He expressed an interest in coming to visit sometime, and so it'd be great to continue to build on that relationship.
Mini prom is April 19th at the IC, it's for the PTO. It's a good time. It's also a silent auction.
What time is that?
That's a great question. It's at 6 o'clock. We'll be at the IC.
Anyone else? You guys covered all my election day, school library month. Thank you to Owen Hanks for recording our meeting. Alright, three C, citizens' committees? Alright, number four, personnel transactions. Anything that you would like to point out actually?
Board members, you will see an additional document under administrative content called rehire contracts. This is the second swing at providing our teachers contracts, who are part of initially a one-year contract with the district, and now we're able to move that to ongoing contracts. Thank you.
I would like to make a motion over. Second. Motion by Carly, seconded by Joel, to approve our personnel transactions. All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Number five, consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to pull up to discuss? Motion to approve consent agenda. Motion by Leah, seconded by Jim, to approve our consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. Anybody opposed? Number six, discussion items, our committee member reports, building grounds and transportation. Joel?
We did not meet because we were vacationing so hard for spring break, but they did provide us with a little bit of an update, I'm sure we've all read that, but for purposes of what we're looking at here, it looks like the buildings and grounds are back to full strength. They're working hard on getting the AC units up in time for the snow this week, and Dave is working on quotes for his summer projects. Transportation, looks like they've got things well under control, I think one of the discussion points was the software comes up running, looks like they're gonna start testing that in April. For student ridership, that'd be something. Next meeting is Monday, April 22nd at 4:30.
Any questions for Joel? Jim, finance committee?
Yes, we met on March 11th, so it's been a little bit since we've met. Brian Brewer from Baird Public Finance joined us, and that was the majority of our, of our conversation. So Brian just illustrated what the impacts would be borrowing different amounts, so for, for the capital referendum, the possible capital referendum in November. So if the district were to borrow 29 million, it would be this impact, if we were to borrow 34 million, it would be that impact. So more to come on that, Brian was gonna go back to the table and look at that closer. We looked at taxes received, so, so far, we have received just under $13 million from tax collection, which reflects 70% of our overall levy. We looked at the calendar, which we do every meeting, and just make sure we're on top of that going forward. And then we received one generous donation, and I apologize, I won't mess up the last name here, but we received a donation for $10,000 from Roger Rexro, for the Richard and Ella Rexro Memorial Scholarship. So, very generous, I'm very thankful for that. And we are to meet very soon here, we meet April 8th, so next Monday at 4:30, virtual.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody have any questions? Adam, safety anonymous?
Yeah, we met on March 18th, and we had a really nice presentation by Tara Hodgson about our suicide risk assessment, walked through a lot about what our district does through, through reading through this, the information itself, our whole plan of attack, and how we try to have this safety net, a really nice safety net for kids. And it's, there, there goes, but a ton of just really great thought into it, providing a well-rounded approach. One of the, the sayings given during the presentation that stuck with me is just the power of, you know, able to, and then through unilateral, unequivocal expressions of love, letting people know that you're there for them, and the whole statistics that we've all seen about if you have someone in the school who you feel like cares about you, how much that changes your outlook. So that was a really nice presentation. We also talked through a little bit of school safety update, continuation of providing the threat assessment procedures. Tara Kelsey Cook and Brian Johnson with the state level training, and Derek bringing that back home to root within the district as well. Brian's looking at writing a policy around this topic, as I reminded in our, in our minutes. We did have a first reading on student physical examinations policy, drew a lot from WASB's feedback as we started, but we talked a little bit through structure, as much as anything else had a lot to do with immunizations and calling out specific language in there to make it just a little bit easier digestible for people. And last, last big one there was the report back on the community engagement night, the cultural potluck and inclusion event, which was a great program, lucky enough to be there for that one, and just hear about, again, belonging in the classrooms, and some fun game-playing bingo about the people non-discrimination report, that got everyone engaged who was attending, so it was a great performance.
Any questions around? Do you want to continue on?
Sure.
Recreation of forestry construction?
Yeah, the park, park back. The big one there is that the village has authorized payment, or authorized construction of a shelter outside of the pickleball courts in Viking Park. It is just a, it's a four-post with a fabric top on it, mostly for sun, keeping people out of the sun. There is the element of rain protection on that too. And they are covering cost side, obviously bringing that back through us. Can we decide which route we're gonna go with as a, as a finance committee?
For consideration, and then come back to the board for approval. There's about a two-month installation, time from purchase to installation on it, so Dave really appreciated us moving that through quickly. If anyone has any questions specifically about it, I'd be glad to answer here tonight about what that is, but basically it's about a 20 by 20, 24 by 20 concrete block, and the thing itself would be about 20 by 20. So pretty good space, have picnic tables underneath, that kind of thing, right off the pathway into the pickleball courts. This can add, it's going to be the funniest committee agenda as well, so.
Great. And one other item of note at that Parks and Rec Committee was the, probably a lot of you have seen, the installation of the new traffic signal, like the pedestrian push-button signals on Eighth Street at Military Bridge, and that was courtesy a fundraiser from Nick Day's family. And just a really generous donation, it's about $6,000, I think the cost of that was, obviously designed for community members of all types, but how many kids use that, that intersection, so great safety addition to the tunnel, would be a really nice addition, and sure will spark conversation about where else we might want to have something like that.
Board members, here's a card to the Day family, if you would all like to sign that, I'd be happy to get that out. Thank you for attending the meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
Fantastic. Any questions for Adam? Alright, but I can see that, Dr. Slerno's screen, Scott is waiting for us, so 7:00 A, consider approval of community survey.
How you doing, Scott? Just a second here. Can you hear us okay? It's good, good to see you, Scott. Thanks for finding time to be with us tonight, and the good work you and your team have done on this draft of the survey.
Yeah, absolutely, excited to be back with a new version of the survey after the comments at, at last, at the last meeting. Some small changes to respond to the concerns you all expressed, and feeling really good about where it's at after going over with the team. So I thought tonight we'd just go through it again, each page, and make sure everyone's ready for approval tonight. So as you can see in the opening letter, it's mostly the same, we did add that grade level configuration to mention the grades that are served in that building. Any other questions on this opening letter here?
I don't think we're hearing any, so thank you.
Okay. Then we move on to the facility challenges page. No major changes on this page. Down below, we did fold this, and then down here, we reordered these per, per all the suggestions at the last meeting. This was one addition since the last board meeting. I believe the district is putting together some link with some informational videos or more information on the plan, and so we're gonna insert a link to that page right here in this spot, so folks who are interested in reading more about the plan can navigate to that. Any questions on this page?
We're likely to have those videos to you by the week's end, if not early part of next week. We shot those last week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, keep going.
So then we move on to the proposed plan, and again, once again, we added the grade configurations here, added some more details and clarified some of the projects over here. And then we've got the big question. Any questions on this page? Okay, and then finally, in the last page, we did take out the overall satisfaction questions, we have a bit of a transition here, and then we focus on the community engagement question, and what folks want to know more about, when will be good for meetings for them? Any questions or concerns on that?
So we added a section about updating middle school special education classrooms, improving middle school ADA compliance, so this amount would get us those things as well?
Yes. At the bottom of this page here, there's that video that we shared with our community about why school districts need to go to referendum for capital needs, and then the impact of revenue limits. It's a really great three-minute and 50-second video. How do board members feel about its placement there at the bottom? Do you think there's value in moving it to another location that might have more eyeballs, or is this right where we want it?
What are the videos that'll be inserted about that?
Thank you, great question. So on the second page, we were proposing, you may remember, people wanted us to do a And then we've got the big question. Any questions on this page? Okay. And then finally in the last page, we did take out the overall satisfaction questions. We have a bit of a transition here. And then we focus on the community engagement question and what folks want to know more about, when will be good for meetings for them? Any questions or concerns on that?
Thank you. So we added a section about updating middle school special education classrooms, improving middle school ADA compliance. So this amount would get us those things as well?
Yes. At the bottom of this page here, there's that video that we shared with our community about why school districts need to go to refer and for capital needs and then the impact of revenue limits. It's a really great three-minute and 50-second video. How do board members feel about its placement there at the bottom? Do you think there's value in moving it to another location that might have more eyeballs? Or is this right where we want it?
What are the videos that'll be inserted about that?
Thank you, great question. So on the second page, we were proposing, you may remember, people wanted us to do a deeper dive into what some of these needs are. And so we created some videos last week that kind of give a more detailed explanation as to what's being proposed as part of the solutions here. So there's one overview video that's all of probably three minutes and then another video that's maybe all of four or five minutes.
I don't think we put those in the same spot. Here's the reason and here's our specific. Here's the background and here's the specifics.
I agree, and I would almost even put like three-minute video, like put that it's a three-minute video. Because even if you put short, people are going to be like, short is a 20 minutes? Like, do you know what I mean? Like, but if it's three minutes, oh, I could zip a click on it, right? I'll click it. Do you know what I mean? But I do agree Joel, like let's put them together further up. Because by the end, they've already cast their vote.
It's over.
It's over. And then they're like, oh, can I redo it?
If I could explain my thoughts on the placement of the two different videos. This one felt very important to have on higher up because it's specific to this plan and the projects you all are proposing. This one is a very informative video, but is more general about Wisconsin's school funding issues. And I didn't want folks to maybe, I guess I wanted to make sure they got as much information about your plan specifically and really wanted to highlight that and have that stand out was the reason we had placed it there. But if you all would be more comfortable with it on page two, we can make that change.
I would agree, I think page two is where that video should be, to Jessica's point. By the time they get to page three and four, they have already indicated their intentions.
Scott, I think to your point, if we put the Mount Horv specific one first and be like, here's more information about the, you know, and then so that in case they decide to only pick one, pick ours first, you know?
I think if, I just think if we put them together, I don't have particularly strong preference, but I wonder if like we want to, yes, what you're doing there was what I was going to say. Like have just a couple more words that explain like why we're putting this other video underneath. That kind of gets at like how you described it, here's the why, here's the why.
Yeah, and again Scott, I would advocate for, once you know how long the video is for, you know, visit or watch this three-minute video, you know, like just make it really clear that it is short.
Something like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that, here?
Yes.
First, we brought first right here, here's how the whole fact, the community health and healthcare center. And I noticed at the top of the next page, we don't have a reference to the primary center other than that are serving our primary center kids. So I wonder if we either need to add labels to the image or somehow indicate that everything on that list is, you know, being done on around the primary center. Just for those that have lost the tenure with the district buildings.
I wonder if label on the image might be the easiest way?
Yeah.
Okay. Are you all able to add that? Okay. Making myself a note.
You can also add in that title, proposed plan for the primary center. It's not going to take up any more real estate up there either.
The only reason I don't need to add in the title is because we do mention some other projects down here.
Yeah.
And I think that's how this came about, it previously referenced the primary center at the top and then when we added that additional scope, took the reference to the primary center away. That's what I was just observing.
Good catch Ryan.
So that QR code, was that a link to the video? Because the people who get the paper copy are not going to type in youtube.com/watch? Question mark, B equals T?
Yeah, I'll add that QR code back in and online it should, I believe in the online version of the survey, we'll have the link directly in there for folks who are taking it online, which most do.
Yeah, but if you have multiple voters in your house and you get an email and you also get, somebody's filling it out on paper at my house.
Good, I'm glad to hear it.
Not everybody gets an email, somebody's got to fill out the paper version.
Yeah, I'll add that QR, QR code in.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Motion to approve the survey. Second? Motion by Leah, second by Carly to approve our community survey. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you very much Scott.
Thank you everyone, really appreciate your time.
Thank you and Ryan, thank you for also being a part of the call tonight.
Happy to, thanks for having me.
Thanks Ryan.
Bye everybody.
7B, Dr. Slone. Oh, are you coming down here to Aubrey then?
Yes.
All right, consider approval of our advertising donations and sponsorship guide.
Okay, so I know we talked about this guide at that link, but just for viewers at home, I'll be quick with that. So as part of one of the board's focuses, I've been helping to set up the process for enabling businesses to advertise at our events and for taking sponsorships. But as an update from our last meeting, in addition to collaborating with you all, Dr. Slone, staff, community members, and a few members of our booster clubs as well as other school districts, we've now officially reviewed the guide with the financial review, which is exciting. And so we'll link our attorney, he gave a look at it and said it looked really great. Awesome, those are the words I want to hear. We have a couple of minor edits, for example, changing the definition section to summary of key terms and then adding a brief tax disclaimer, there's a couple of minor edits there, a couple more. As one of my last steps in the process, I also reviewed the guide interactively. So now you can click on all the links, the technical contents, as well as the appendix, my email address and the policies will take you directly to board file. So yeah, those are updates. And this is an action item this time, that's in the description.
Any questions, comments?
I should change the order.
Put you to section, to section five.
Oh, that looks great. Oh yeah, in the individual forms are.
Yes. That's normal. Thank you for all your help. Motion to approve.
Second? Motion by Jim, seconded by Joel to approve the Mount Horv area's school district's advertising donation and sponsorship guide. Any further discussion? All of you, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? To Aubrey.
Thank you so much for helping. It's a huge honor.
7C, consider approval of district self-evaluation of the status of people non-discrimination and quality of educational opportunities.
Thanks for having us. We are excited to start to kind of go through some of this. You want some of this? Yeah. Thank you. This is our self-evaluation findings. We, the DPI asks us to do this every five years. Due to COVID, it's actually been closer to like seven or eight. It takes a lot of work from a lot of people who are involved, especially to do it well and to really kind of examine and go through the data and to see where we need to make improvements on. So here's a list of all of the people who have had their hand in collecting data, analyzing data, putting it into this document as a whole. And so if you've been able to go through, see that document, you can go through point by point, but we'll just give you a group overview today.
So scope of the work, the Wisconsin Department of Public Construction can monitor several areas we think about. Discipline, suspensions, expulsions, through annual reports that we kick out through the county campus. But there's many other pieces of information and data that necessarily can't get pulled from county campus directly to the state. That's where the people non-discrimination report comes in. Over time, those bullets haven't added to. This is probably the fifth iteration of this plan, of these needs by the state. And just from last plan to this plan, so within six years, we have two new bullets as well that we added to this plan as we were going through and looking at the reality in our school district as we were writing this report. This self-evaluation Brian said is a really important, but it's more that it really gives us the time and space towards the team, and we saw the team members on the previous slide, to really dig into all of our data, all of our practices, all of our policies, all of our procedures to really see where we have to go, where we also had successes as well. And we'll share a couple of those with you today. We provided many opportunities for those to provide input and development and ready in the plan. You can see all those dates that started in January on the left-hand side. And then the right-hand side is the review piece and the evaluation of the plan. So after we worked on it and wrote it, February elections working, we could engage.
One of the key pieces to this is our people non-discrimination statement, which we have in front of you, which has over time added on one piece component. So I think it was a year or two ago, we added the homelessness piece to it. And so one of the first questions that the self-evaluation asked us is, have you updated your status and are all of these components added? Which is a yes. And then is it in every single location possible? And so we go through all of our handbooks, all of our materials, all of the websites, all of those things to really make sure that it's repeated over and over again. And there are policies up there. And so we, out of all of the components, right, we missed it in just one handbook. And so now it's added, right? We just have made note of it, we added to it, it'll be in there. And then, yeah, so that was kind of our first kind of look at.
A large component, if you went through all 45 pages of the plan, a good half of it is in appendices, looking at middle school, high school, athletics, activities and so on and so forth. Prior to that though, we have a couple of areas where we dated more in curricular areas. This is an example of one of those where we have our career and technical education enrollment. So again, we disaggregate our data to make sure that our high school enrollment percentages are equal to what maybe the percentage of our CTE classes. You can see how we define the CTE classes below this field. One piece that maybe jumps out the quickest to some is the sex of the students, male or female, within our CTE program classes compared to high school enrollments. As you can see in the 2022-23 school year, 26% of the students in those classes were identified as female. Maybe they think, man, that is low. Well, we did this report back in 16, 17, it was 8.4% of students who were female. And that was the high, that was the highest number of that report. So we've been making gains. Our teaching staff has been creating a space where males and females can feel that we feel like they belong in these courses. So that's something that needs to celebrate and you wouldn't know that necessarily unless we do reports like these, and the US Center on previous year's reports.
So here's just another example of something that we're continuing to look at is if our students with IEPs, are our numbers increasing? Are our numbers in relationship to sex rates associated on status as well as English proficiency? Are they staying relatively the same over time? And while our, as you can see, our numbers keep increasing, those numbers of students with IEPs are increasing, our percentages of individuals in it are relatively staying the same. Again, we do look also at overall, what's our overall district data comparison as well and then make sure it's in alignment. As this one, as you can see, it's also males are a little bit higher in this realm, but on almost every other category, we're pretty close to where we're at as a district-wide comparison. So those are, you know, that's just, these are just a couple of examples of things that we kind of look at. Again, like Sarah said, the whole document is 45 pages. And if you were at the community night the other night, we went through multiples of these and we're just sharing a couple with you to kind of get some examples.
Quick question for both of you, just on the, those first two categories, it was pretty consistent with, you know, industry norms or whatever it would be too.
For students with an IP, have you learned the CTE?
CTE.
I don't think we've ever done, without looking at things. I would, I mean, if you think about the sciences and math-related courses, our careers, I think there is that data out there saying it's more male-dominated. But I know companies are investing in having more diversity and working in that piece of it. So I think it's changing, just like we're seeing numbers are changing. I can't give you a definite, more, gotten what you're seeing, what you're reading.
Right. Our students with IEPs are pretty consistent, the statement average on where we're at. We're a little bit, feeling a little bit better in the race column where there's a lot of districts, especially around us, who are disproportionate in their race data. And we're pretty consistent with our, compared to, to our students with IEPs without IEPs in terms of those categories. So we feel good about that.
Would you say that does, that would see why we're like comparable with the total percentage of students?
Yes. Yeah, it really averages around that. Everyone across the state has seen a huge increase in IP referrals since COVID, especially in the area of speech and language. And so that is where a lot of the increase comes from and that's very, we're talking about a lot right now, how we can get that back to normal.
Scholarship is another area that we can quantify and look at. So you see three different years here of different classes, the class of 21 through the class of 23. We see here also, we see the overall class and the first row of that color and that those that apply and those that were awarded. Couple of quick ahahs, more females are upon, therefore being reported in scholarships. Things to be aware of, how do we encourage males to take those scholarships and then looking at that piece of it too. But otherwise, relatively comparable to our overall demographic data per class.
We also look at each sport that we offer within the district and kind of look at that and how it compares. We just pulled one out, which is football. So really look at what are, kind of enrollment at the high school again, and then who's in our honor football team. Obviously you can, you can see we're pretty, good in a lot of the categories. Male, female is again pretty lopsided, you'd expect that. It's probably pretty impressive that there's almost 6% of students that are participating. And so, yeah, so that's just kind of, you know, we're just always looking at each sport. We look at it, we see if there's anywhere, any improvement that we could make, any, how, and then really discuss what are the barriers that are maybe preventing certain groups of students from participating? And as an institution, how can we stop some of those barriers to allow for participation? And so it's been, it's given us some opportunity to talk about how we can transportation, how we, when we have practices, some of those discussions to be able to incorporate and then maybe include some more kids.
Is this an opportunity for you to put a plug in for our adaptive sports league?
Yeah, so one thing that I'm really excited about is we, some preschool district has started a adaptive sports team, talking about specifically for students with IEPs who are not able to participate talking about specifically for students with IEPs who are not able to participate in general sports teams. And so what we're looking at is, there's three sports teams that get offered throughout the year. There's a fall, six weeks in the fall, six weeks in winter, and six weeks in the spring. And we are in talks and collaborating pretty hard right now with Verona, on kind of having a joint team, because we wouldn't have enough students probably in Mount Horv to build our own team. And so we're, like, it's, we're having lots of meetings and kind of getting them ready to go. But it would be, it'll be, fall would be indoor soccer. Winter, we're looking at not doing winter, because it would have a heavier price commitment, because it's indoors, it's field hockey. And when you're talking about helmets and a lot of the gear with it, it might... We're just starting out two to start with and see how it goes. And then spring would be with a wall. And we would compete against different communities. So the Madison Schools will have it next year, Wana Keel will have it next year. Sub Prairie, the two high schools will have it, and then up in Farland or Oregon are hoping to have one as well. So we would compete, we would have the coaches, and it would allow our students with some of our most significant disabilities to participate in athletic sports team through the high school. So it's pretty exciting.
So that's one piece of our plan.
Yeah.
You can see some other pieces as well, where we think about, so we achieve and grow, scholarships, instructional materials. We, we're looking at those, we'll need, we'll get most impactful pieces as well as we look at our systems. And you can see here who are the leads, and how, and when, where we can plan on having a timeline for these action steps. Any questions? Sorry, it's so long. But we want to make sure we have some time on it, actually. For us, we send in a verification form, it's ready to go tomorrow, if the board cruises tonight. Dr. Slarano would send in, and then the form goes with the guide, now it's going to go into the process. We then, we probably pull a note in our paper that's, this evaluation is available also via certified notice in next week's paper. And I will also place this on our website for people to view as well.
I didn't crosswalk it, that last slide that you showed us with the table and the action steps. Is that all the recommendations that are throughout use?
Majority of them, yeah. Larger pieces, larger pieces.
I figured it was much, but I didn't like.
Yep.
I went through it, I think I know the answer to the question, but was there any area of extra concern? That we had? I looked at the data, it didn't seem like there was anything out of line, but anything that you guys noted that it takes precedent over?
Sure. Okay, sorry. A piece that we didn't necessarily put in this report, but has been a part of these reports, is looking at the human data, especially for students with disabilities and closing the human gaps. That's just an area that we're potentially going in. As you can see, we're leaning towards, like, that co-teaching piece, especially at the community center, we're trying to see gaps closed, but it just takes time, right? Having the systems and the structures and the staffing to do that has been a piece. So that necessarily wasn't in this report, but it's a piece that we've been talking about, looking at for six to seven years now. Other than that, is there anything?
I think that there was no big, like, ah, like, we've been doing a lot of work around our equity teams. We've been doing a lot of this work around, just in regular meetings with our staff, like, looking at the data, and so there was no big ahas, but there was definite reminders. And now that you can have an action, sort of an action plan with the staff to actually move forward with it. So a lot of the things are talked about, we kind of knew, or we just kind of found out, like, you know, like, little pieces, but not big ahas, I would say.
Yeah, I worked over the past four or five years with the United District Equity Committee. Like, it's not a least, we're starting with this time, right? So that's what happened.
Any questions, comments?
Just really appreciate how thorough it was, because we threw, especially to have summary of the findings. Maybe you can run there, maybe see the...
Thanks for reading.
Press the page.
We did, we looked at the education committee too, last, I don't remember, before, I can't remember. So just before the community night, so it was a lot of work, for sure, that went into it. So it was good to read, I mean, it's 45 pages, but... But it was good, and the community night was, it was really good to get all of the staff participation. We should talk about their work and cost of time.
That sounds like a motion if I ever heard of it.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve.
I would say.
Motion by Carly, seconded by Jim, to approve the district self-evaluation of states of people non-discrimination and equality of educational opportunities. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Aubrey, you could join us again. Consider revisions to Board Policy 851, advertising and sponsorship.
So thanks to the community and legislative engagement committee's suggestion, we removed the procedures from Policy 851. It probably sounds like I have a broken record, because we did this last week with 840, but it just helps to place the procedures into a separate administration regulation, just ensuring that folks can clearly understand the policy from procedure. So without further ado, it looks very similar to what it used to look like, just very much bones, just removed the procedures. Any questions about that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Adam, to approve revisions to Board Policy 851. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Oh, it's a roll call, I apologize. First reading. Joel?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes, Chris?
Yes.
Adam?
I am also a yes.
Thank you for the reminder. Thank you, Aubrey.
Thank you.
Number eight. Any comments? No. Number nine, future agenda items. If there's anything that you would like to discuss, please tell me in the chat. No? Schedule of our next meetings, anything to highlight?
I won't, because it's not really a full board meeting, but we will have our candidacy about the school board election that takes place next Monday afternoon, the 8th of April, at 3:00 PM at the district office. Everybody's welcome to attend this.
I was gonna ask, so, I was like, I put in my calendar, but it's not. All right. Number 11, closed session. Contemplate a closed session per Section 19.85, Fences 1C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility and E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public property, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session to, in 2024, 2025 MHA negotiations, business partnerships. So, motion by Leah, seconded by Carly, vote or no vote? Joel?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Carly?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
And also a yes, it is 758, an 805, come back together? Okay.